Call this meeting to order. Roll call please, Fernando.
Councilmember Rivas.
Here.
Councilmember Green.
Here.
Vice Mayor McCurvy.
Here.
Mayor Meister.
Here.
All right. This is a time for oral communication. This is an opportunity to address the City Council on any matter scheduled for closed session. Unless additional time is authorized by the council, all commentaries shall be limited to three minutes. Is there anybody that would like to come forward for oral communication? I don't see anybody. Anybody online, Fernando?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. We're on to closed session. City Manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. We do have eight items before you this evening in closed session. The first being pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8, Conference with Rural Property Negotiators, property APN 260300034. Agency negotiator Patrice Hildreth and Jason Ridenhour. Negotiating parties City of Porterville and Self-Help Enterprises under negotiations, terms and price. Number two is pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8, Conference with Rural Property Negotiators, properties APN 0253160064, 065069070 and 261125018, 019 and 020. Agency negotiators Jason Ridenhour and Gregory James Shelton under negotiation, terms and price. Item number three is pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, Conference with Labor Negotiators, Jason Ridenhour and Juliana Andrade, employee organization, management and confidential series. Item four is pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation City of Porterville versus Tulare County Regional Transit Agency, Enabul Hassan, Tulare County Superior Court case number VCU 312913. Number five is pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D3, Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, two cases in which facts are not yet known to potential plaintiffs. Number six is pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4, Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation, one case. Number seven is pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, public employee appointment, employment title city manager and interim city manager. Number eight is pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, Conference with labor negotiator, agency negotiator Mayor Greg Meister, employee organization unrepresented management, interim city manager.
All right. We'll go into closed session.
All right. So at 6:37, we'll reconvene open session and report on reportable actions taken in closed session.
Thank you, Your Honor. There is action on item four to report. The council approved a settlement agreement with the Tullary County Regional Transit Agency by a vote of 4-0. They, also known as TCRTA, will repay a loan from the city and pay for services performed by the city. The agreement also covers the amounts that TCRTA may draw down from federal and state transit funds for the prior year. And a copy of the agreement is available on request.
Thank you. All right, well, I'll ask you all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, led by myself, and then remain standing for invocation.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone that would like to give an invocation?
As we come before you, Father, I'd like to pray that you touch each and every person in the city of Porterville, that you touch our council members, and that you touch our city staff in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. All right. Is there anyone else? Please be seated. We have one presentation this evening. Employee of the Month will be Eileen Caldrone. Did I say that right? Is she here today, if you could come up? And Patrice?
Eileen was born and raised in the city of Porterville. She started her career with the city as a part-time library aide in 2012. In 2016, her dedication and work ethic earned her a promotion to a full-time library assistant. She continued to expand her skills by joining the Engineering and Project Management Department as administrative aide in 2019, and in 2021, she transitioned to administration as a human resources aide. In her current role, Eileen plays a vital role in human resources. Her responsibilities include managing workers' compensation, tracking employee leave, and overseeing OSHA reporting. She previously handled recruitment and onboarding, organized employee service awards, and provided top-notch customer service at the front counter. Known for her warm smile, exceptional customer service, and expert-level Excel skills, Eileen is an integral part of the human resources team. Eileen has a husband of seven years, Jimmy, and an energetic three-year-old named Coda. They are also eagerly expecting a baby girl Coda. They are also eagerly expecting a baby girl in April 2025. In her free time, Aileen enjoys spending time with her family and loves crafting. There is no craft too difficult for Aileen. She can do it all. She also enjoys reading and listening to audiobooks. Her favorite genre is mystery thriller. Aileen is also our in-office Excel expert. Currently pursuing her bachelor's degree, Aileen is on track to graduate in May 2025, furthering her commitment to personal and professional growth. Aileen enjoys working with the administration team and loves to help wherever she can. Please join us in congratulating Aileen Calderon as the January Employee of the Month.
Aileen, would you like to introduce your family?
Sure. My husband, Jimmy, and my little boy, Koda. My nephew came, Juju, his name is Julius.
That is a kid. I didn't catch that. Is that her son and her husband?
Yes, yeah, and her husband back there. Congratulations. All right. It is now time for oral communication. This is the opportunity to address the council on any matters of interest, whether on the agenda or not. Please address all items not scheduled for public hearings at this time. Unless additional time is authorized by the council, all commentary shall be limited to three minutes.
Well, you know who I am, and everything's on file.
Could you state your name just for reference?
Edith Levon, or should I say Edith Ann?
Thank you.
If you're old enough to remember that. I'm feeling very sad on some ways and some very happy on some. I'm extremely sad that Patrice is retiring, but to tell you the truth, I'm happy for her because she's going to have more time to spend with her family and to pursue anything she wants without the heavy load of holding the positions she has held with us and done so well. It's going to be hard to find somebody to replace you for everything you did, and I don't know about the rest of you here, but I'm going to miss you a lot, and I kudos to one of the best. Now, you guys are new, well, except for one, who's slightly used. You guys have a lot to learn, because working for a city that's under a charter system is a lot different than a lot of things out there, and it took me a long time to understand, but thanks to things that are available, I learned, and I'm going to watch you as you learn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Hello, my name is Susanna. I am here representing my mother. Her name is also Susanna, and we are residing at 195 North Martin Street. I am here because I am in violation of Section 110 of the City of Porterville. So technically, we moved into our home 17 years ago, and our understanding is that our house is not, we were not aware that the plum trees that are next to our house also belong to us. That was never, we were not notified. That was not something that we had any idea of, and I can show you, but technically, every time we have a storm where there is any, like, winds or anything like that, they all go on the street, and everyone just kind of piles them on the side of our house, well, the sidewalk, and apparently, that's now part of our responsibility. The seat, I got a letter, or my parents got a letter, that said that if we did not clean up, it was going to be $1,000. In this economy, we do not have $1,000 to be providing to the city, I'm sorry, nor do we have the financial means to be paying a person to clean up those plum trees, because we're not talking, like, we planted those. Those were already there when we moved into our home, and so to show you what the pile that was on the street came out to be was this. We cleaned it up, right, because it was like, I tried talking to the person, the code enforcement person, and he was like, "It's your responsibility. You've got to do it." So we did it, and this weekend, we had that other storm, and it was a mess. So now the pile is two times the size, and now I'm expected to clean it up or pay someone. That's, I'm sorry, it's a little ridiculous. So I am here to see if there is anything that the city can do to help us.
We're not allowed to engage in communication, but you're more than welcome to leave your information with staff or get staff's information, and also our business cards are in the back.
Okay, I can send you an email. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Taha Saleh, and I'm here on behalf of the Porterville Chamber of Commerce to give you an update of what we're up to. Our next Coffee with the CEO will be tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. at Stafford's Coffee. This is another opportunity for you to come out and meet our members and chat with the CEO and board. Anyone who wants to discuss their business, seek advice, share their needs, or just want to come by and chat is welcome to join us, including you, council members. We will not be having a First Friday Coffee or Ambassador's Lunch in the month of January. We will see you guys back in February for both events. We will be having two ribbon cuttings in January, one on January 16th at 11:00 a.m. for Maximus Techere, and one on the 30th of January at 1:30. You can find more information for both in our newsletter or our Facebook page. And last but not least, from the Chamber, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for oral communication? Fernando, is there anyone online?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. Okay, next is reports. This is a time for all committee commissions and board reports, subcommittee reports, and staff informational items, beginning with the Parks and Leisure Service Commission. Is there anyone present to provide the report? Parks and Leisure.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I am Arlene Pena, Parks and Leisure Service Commissioner with our commission report. The youth basketball league games have begun at Santa Fe School. The league is for boys and girls ages five to 13, and once again, it hit a full capacity with 26 teams. The Adult Flag Football League is underway with two Saturdays of games having been played at the sports complex. Eight teams make up the league. The Zalad House candlelight tours concluded last weekend. A good number of folks took in the festive decorations and refreshments. The senior Christmas luncheon was held December 8th. 130 attended. The afternoon that included a catered meal, live studio band music, and many door prizes. Thanks to Burton Middle School for participating with the city once again to provide the facility and students to serve the meals. Judging takes place this week for the Christmas home decorating contest. A map of the participants may be found on the Parks and Leisure's website, and the public may vote for People's Choice Award. The New Year Eve Gala returns December 31st at the Veterans Building from 8:00 p.m. to midnight. Jerry Hall and Trick Shot will be performing, and there will be a meal served. The deadline to register the Military Banner Program is February 1st. Applicants may be complete online at the Parks and Leisure Service website or in person at the Centennial Plaza office. Finally, the first of three Friday evening virtual bingo nights kick off January 10th at 6:00 p.m. There's no cost to play, and winners compete for prizes. That concludes the report. Thank you for your time, and happy holidays from the Parks and Leisure Commission. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Pena.
Thank you.
Next would be Library and Literacy Commission.
And I warn you new ones, I'm like a bad weed. I'm here every second meeting, except when we're on what I call it sabbatical, they call it summer leave. Our, I don't know if you've seen what this month's schedule is at the library, but I'll tell you next month, because the library has at least one thing going every day this month, and attendance is wonderful. You need to see what our staff can do, because they can do more with what they have than most libraries who have permanent facilities. The highlights from November are the virtual storytimes, which are held every Tuesday on Facebook, and Storytime is 10 for English, 11 for Spanish. It's led by Anna. And I want to go a little more detail because, Maester, I know you know what this reg, but some of you don't understand everything, so I will be more explicit. They read books, sing songs, and play games with puppets. We had 502 English time students and 528 Spanish, so a total view was 1,030. They'll figure that out. That's kids, and actually, the report I gave last month, it was bigger. The adult club selection for November was The Last Bookshop by Ivy Woods. It has nine members who attended this month, and they received the book free. It's scheduled for Saturdays, every fourth Saturday at 2:00 p.m. in the temporary library. Bilingual Storytime is held every Thursday morning at 10:00 a.m., and it is hosted by staff alma, and it's an enrichment program for toddlers and preschool-aged kids. In other words, getting our youngsters ready to start school, to have them one step ahead, and especially in Spanish, I think it's more important, because some of them are not as literate at this point if they're in a home which the main language is Spanish. It includes books read by staff, songs with movement, and activities such as playing with educational board games, coloring and kinetic sand. Forty-three participated. Family literacy, which is literacy for the whole family, is every Thursday of, every month at 5:30, and it helps enrich the families in their early literacy skills through reading books together and playing educational games that support and enhance math, English, reading, writing, grammar, vocabulary, all the basics, again, that they're going to need for the children to go to school, and it helps the parents who all have to be able to help their children while they're in school. Game Day activities are every second and fourth Sunday and Tuesday, and they bring their own games or use the library's games, and they play. Good old-fashioned board games, not an electronic idiot. There were 83 participants with that. Young Adult Book Club for ages 16 to 24 is the selection for November was The Reappearance of Rachel Price by Holly Jackson, and Giselle had three members attend last month, and they all receive a copy of the book that's being read. The one that I like is the Thousand Books Before Kindergarten Challenge, and this is for families and caregivers to read at least 1,000 books with their young children before they enter kindergarten, and there were eight children who signed up last month. On November 1st, which is International Game Day, they had four participants, and it was Nintendo, Switch, board games, colorings, puzzles, et cetera. November 1st, again, kids and at Dennis Barge Yarn event, they were provided a booth to talk about upcoming events, and they had the spinner wheel and gave away promotional incentives. There were 81 participants. The second was the First Chapter Book Friends Book Club, which they read Pig in Disguise. I love that title, by Marcy. There were three participants. The seventh was Central California Legal Services, were at the library to help provide free services for anybody who needed help. The 13th staff went to Bellevue, and they took the Early Literacy Mobile. Have you seen, how many of you up there have seen that little electric book mobile we have? It is so cute.
Driving around?
Yeah. It's tiny, and it was donated, and I make me laugh. The only thing that's bad about it, and staff will agree with me, is when it's 114 outside, it's hotter than that thing, because there's no air conditioning. But other than that, it's nice. And they went there and they presented 10-minute Storytime sessions and visited different classrooms, and they did interactive songs and read aloud books about Thanksgiving and did a coloring activity. Seventy-two participants at Bellevue. The 21st, they did the same thing at Westfield. Had a family night event, and they had 54 participants. Staff held various crafts during the month of November, and there were 57 participants. And now, this is the reason I got on the Library and Literacy Commission. I used to work putting people to work. Jason's familiar with what I used to do. And when I did that, we lost a lot of businesses in a certain period who had employees who'd worked 20 years, 25 years successfully, but under the new rules, they have to sit and fill out applications themselves. And there were a lot of them that couldn't do it, and I became aware of something which, even though I'd been putting people to work for eons, I didn't realize how really serious it was and how really talented people were held back with the way going and looking for jobs and interviewing, et cetera, had changed. So, and then we have people who are wanting, needing to learn English to advance themselves. And the Literacy Achievement Center, Anna is now recognizes the alphabet on site. Now, think about that. That's a lot. Judah has improved his pronunciation, and him virus successfully completed English host work. Now, this doesn't sound like much to those of us who have been speaking English since birth. Well, I spoke German for six years. I was six when I stopped speaking it in the home. You'd be amazed. These are achievements, but they have, these are adults, these are not kids. They're helping adults become more literate so they can get better jobs and better support their family and their community. So, welcome aboard. You're going to see me every month.
Thank you, Edith. Moving on to Arts Commission. I see one, no one represent, we'll move on to number four, Animal Control Commission. Not seeing anyone. Moving on to Youth Commission. All right.
Hello, my name's Austin Muirhead. I'm the Summit ASP Vice President, and I'm, me and Ziki are here to represent the Youth Commission. So, we've had a total of four meetings this year. The first one was on September 11th, the second one was October 9th, then it was November 13th, and the 13th of this month as well. In these meetings, we were talking about different events and stuff we were planning on doing throughout the whole duration of our time at Youth Commission, and we have a total of 10 members in the Youth Committee from the different type of school, from the different schools in Porterville. We have Strathmore Summit, Natchee, Harmony. We have Strathmore Summit, Natchee, Harmony, Porterville Military Academy, and PHS. And our goal for this year is to, or the currently commissioners will be, continue to review and update the Youth Commission activities planned for the year. The plan will have specific goals and activities, the steps to complete the goals and activities, and the goal, or complete goals for, before the deadlines. The goals, activities fall into the five goal categories: environmental advocacy, self-care, supporting local businesses, city preservation, and youth employment experience.
My name is Zeke. I'm from Summit as well, as Austin mentioned. And some of the potential goals that we have for the 2024, 2025 Youth Commission is to adopt, we're planning, we want to adopt the section of the garden at the Zalid House to preserve the planting, and we would like to paint fences, the fences there as well, and maintain the garden. Our second goal would be to create a social media inspirational video for teens to access. Our third goal would be to support the lack, the local animal shelter. Our fourth goal would be to support youth employment programs such as Jumpstart at Porterville College for high school juniors. Our fifth goal is to support cleanup events in the city, and our sixth goal is to volunteer and assist at a local business. So, some of the current events and activities that we've already done is we've had a guest speaker come to one of our meetings. Her name was Claudia Calderon, and she's the Community Development Director. And she, she came at our last meeting, which was on the 13th of this month, and she went over the services and programs available for the public. She also disclosed the future projects and goals for the department, which was shared to all of the commissioners. Another event, another, yes, another activity that we've done so far is, the Youth Commission has adopted a section of the garden in Zalid House to renovate. The purpose of the activity is to have a part in preserving a history of the city. The Commission will be planting additional plants and cleaning up in the garden for the month of January 2025. And our third activity that we've had is the Youth Commission, we've already started planning to assist the animal shelter with some of their needs through a fundraiser, which would be like, we're thinking kind of like the Toys for Tots, but instead of Toys for Tots, it'd be like, I think it was, do you remember the name, like Toys for Dogs or Sheets for, it was, it was like a neat little name that we did for the animals, but that's all we have. Thank you so much.
Hey, Austin, Zeke, thank you both, and thank you for keeping to, trying to keep our traditions alive, like Zalid, or, excuse me, yeah, Zalid Park, or, or the Dog Pound, the Zalid Houses, just great stuff. Keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, moving on to Talk Committee, Transaction and Use Tax Oversight Committee. Is anyone here? No? Okay, so with that, with that, we'll go into Staff Information Reports. Patrice?
Thank you, Your Honor. We do have one report for you this evening, and that is the Water Conservation Phase Four Status Update as of November 2024. We can answer questions, provide a verbal report, whatever the pleasure the council is.
Does council have any questions on this report? None at this time?
No.
Okay, we'll move on to the Consent Calendar. All Consent Calendar items are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these matters unless a request is made, in which event the item will be removed from the Consent Calendar. And all items removed from the Consent Calendar for further discussion will be heard at the end of Schedule Matters. How does council want to go forward with this? Are there any items that I'd like to be polled? And I'd just go ahead and state that I'd like to poll Agenda Item Number 11 for myself for discussions in Schedule Matters. It's the Porterville Girls Fast Pitch Haysfield Agreement Renewal. How, is there any, any other Consent Calendar items that you would like to be polled, any for discussion?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept all the items and poll item number 11.
Okay, so we have a motion for consent items 1 through 10 and 12 through 15. I'll second that motion. Fernando, please call for the vote. Okay, call for the vote. It passes unanimous, 4-0. All right, moving on to the public hearing. City Manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. We do have one public hearing before you this evening, and that is the consideration of Porterville Development Ordinance text amendments, and Ms. Calderon will be presenting.
Thank you, Ms. Hildreth. I've asked Mr. O'Neill to present the item.
Thank you, Director and City Manager. Honorable Mayor and City Council, as mentioned, we have before you a series of text amendments to the development ordinance of the City of Porterville's municipal code, largely focusing on housing policies and standards. Since we have three new members on, on the council, I thought I would go off the script a little bit and just give you a brief background as to the rationale here, since the staff report is highly mechanical and doesn't provide any context really. So, the primary planning document that we have, and that every city and county has in California, is the General Plan, which consists of a series of eight chapters or topics that are referred to as elements, ranging from land use and circulation to noise and open space. Recently, the city just adopted the newest element, which is the environmental justice element, and made updates to its health and safety element. Also among these is the housing element, which is unique among the eight elements in that it is, we have to update that on an eight-year cycle. We're currently working on that right now with a consultant and the Department of Housing and Community Development. So, the, the primary tool that we have for implementing any part of the general plan, including the housing element, is our development ordinance. And in order to effectively do that, we're proposing these text amendments. They are included as programs in the housing element, and largely they provide streamlining between what our ordinances say and what state law says that we're already implementing, specifically related, most particularly related to things like accessory dwelling units and density bonus. And it also contains some other modifications to our standards that will help ease constraints such as reducing parking requirements for certain apartment complexes, and, and other changes like that that are not wholesale changes, they're just kind of little fixes to, to smooth things out. One thing I would like to point out that what we're proposing in the language that is attached indicates that we would no longer permit single-family residences in multifamily zones, our RM1, 2, and 3 zones. We would like to suggest instead that the council consider leaving those as allowable, but only as part of small lot subdivisions, which would then be developed consistent with the density that's established in the general plan and the zoning ordinance. Other than that, I'd be happy to take any questions. We also have part of the consultant team that has been helping with housing-related tasks that can answer any questions that I can't field. We do request that you open the hearing to the public, followed by an introduction of the ordinance.
All right, we'll, we'll open the public hearing at 7:09. Is there anyone here that would like to provide public comments on this item? Okay, not seeing anyone. We'll close the public hearing at 7:09 and bring it back to the council. Is there any discussion or questions the council has that you'd like to ask?
Well, that last item that you mentioned, that you could have a single-family home exception in a multifamily area, can you explain that a little bit more?
Sure. Currently, the, the current version of the development ordinance allows single-family homes on properties zoned for multifamily development. One of the proposed housing element programs would be to remove that with the intent being that it would allow for, it would, it would, it would allow for multifamily development on those instead of single-family. However, currently, the development ordinance does include in the purpose of those multifamily zones, small lot, single-family residences. And staff now believes that if we leave, if we leave single-family homes as a permitted use in the multifamily zones, as long as they're associated with a subdivision that would come before city council for consideration, that is another way to provide higher, I guess, higher density development, more efficient use of the land, while not simply restricting it to apartments. It could still be single-family residences on those properties. So, we would propose that the by-right use of single-family remain in multifamily zone as long as it's part of a subdivision.
It has to be part of a subdivision?
Correct.
Thank you for clarifying that. It's very important. You know, when I read the, through the documents, it looked like we were streamlining a lot of stuff just to simplify, and I really enjoyed that explanation because that single-family, multifamily consideration is really important to a lot of people around here that are trying to build in these unique areas, maybe outside of a subdivision. So, that's why I'm asking for clarification on that. Thank you.
Mr. O'Neill, thank you very much for that clarification. Thanks.
You're welcome, sir. Any other comments? No? Yeah, and I would agree, it's, it's streamlining, and I know we're abiding by the state laws that are being pushed on us, and this may be one time where it actually benefits some of, some of what we're doing. So, with that, is there a motion to approve?
I'd make a motion to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, it sounds like, or, do we have to, we don't need to read out, we could make a motion with staff recommendation?
Yes.
So, I'll second that motion. Call for the vote. Passes 4-0.
Just for the record, that did include the clarification that, that the staff made as part of the recommendation. Just to make, make sure it's on the record, so, for the city clerk.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Schedule Matters. City, yes?
We'd like to read by title only.
Yes.
We have it, thank you. Yay, paper. An ordinance of the City Council, the City of Porterville amending Series 200, Series 300, and Series 700 of the Porterville Development Ordinance.
Okay, moving on to Schedule Matters. City Manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. We do have three scheduled matters now before you. The first is the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA, funding, and Ms. Rodriguez will be presenting this item.
Thank you, Ms. Hildreth. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. On March 11th, 2021, the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, was enacted to provide federal assistance to recover from the economic and public health effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. ARPA coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds provide direct financial support to states, counties, cities, and tribal governments. Eligible uses of these funds include responding to the public health emergency, addressing negative economic impacts, replacing lost revenue, providing premium pay to essential workers, and making necessary investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. The City of Porterville received an ARPA allocation of $19,984,717 dispersed in two tranches. Under the U.S. Department of the Treasury guidelines, ARPA funds must be obligated by December 31st, 2024, and fully expended by December 31st, 2026. Funding for the ARPA operating budget of $737,315 requires an obligation of said funds before December 31st, 2024. The city is able to meet the obligation requirements and deadline by entering into an interagency agreement between itself and the City of Porterville Finance Department. ARPA guidelines allow unspent obligated funds to be reallocated between eligible projects and the operating budget. On July 16th, 2024, the council authorized staff to distribute a request for proposals for the design and installation of a prefabricated dining facility with commercial kitchen and office space and a sanitation facility with public restrooms and showers as an expansion of the Porterville Navigation Center. A total of $2,500,000 in American Rescue Plan Act funds were allocated to fund this project. The proposal awarded on November 5th, 2024, was for $2,459,994. This amount did not account for a $346,000 contingency for a total construction cost of $2,805,994. On December 3rd, 2024, the council adopted a draft resolution approving Amendment Number Three to the Permanent Local Housing Allocation PLHA Five-Year Plan to reallocate PLHA Year Four funds for this project. This amendment includes contingency language to ensure that if the funds for the PNCNAP expansion are not needed, or if other funding sources are found, the PLHA funds can be returned to their original intended uses. A total of $293,840 in permanent local housing allocation were allocated to fund this project. Staff was directed to bring back an item to allocate the additional costs of $12,154. However, after an internal review of the fiscal year 2425 ARPA operating budget, it was determined that $400,000 allocated for the operation of the Navigation Center is available. Staff is requesting to reallocate $305,994 to fund the Navigation Center project, and the remaining $94,006 to fund the Community Center and Park project. Any unspent funds from the fiscal year 2024/25 ARPA budget will be redirected to cover any budget overages for ARPA identified projects, with a priority being the Navigation Center expansion and/or the Community Center and Park projects. Staff recommends that the City Council authorize a draft interagency agreement between the City of Porterville and the Finance Department, authorize the mayor to execute the draft interagency agreement on behalf of the city, authorize the finance director to execute their portion of the draft interagency agreement, authorize the reallocation of $305,994 in American Rescue Plan Act funds to fully fund the Porterville Navigation Center expansion project, authorize the reallocation of $94,006 in American Rescue Plan Act funds to fund the Community Center and Park project, and authorize the finance director to redirect any unspent funds from the 2425 ARPA budget to cover any budget overages for ARPA identified projects, with a priority being the Navigation Center expansion project and/or the Community Center and projects. The action taken tonight for the $400,000 will be reflected in the draft agreement. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you, and I'll bring it back to the council. I'll start with Stan Green. Do you have any questions?
Not at the moment, I don't.
Okay, reserving. Councilman Rivas?
In regards to the allocations of all those funds, are we certain that those funds will be allocated to those departments?
That, that's why we're doing the interagency agreement, so that we can make sure that we have those funds obligated to expend before the December 31st, 2026 deadline.
Okay, thank you.
Vice, Vice Mayor McCurvy?
Well, you know, the ARPA funds, that's, that's a, that's an interesting subject. I really like that we're going to be able to use that money for something that does a lot of good for the community. And I'm really interested in this and up to it, including as we finish up all of the ARPA spending this year, doing a full accounting of all the money that we have spent over the last few years, and maybe reviewing that in the COVID committee as a recommendation. But are there any other ARPA funds outside of the Navigation Center specifically, or is this the end of the ARPA funds?
This will be the end of the ARPA funds. That's what's remaining. So, we need to make sure we obligate that, and it needs to be expended before December 31st, 2026.
Okay, I just want to make sure that was where I was headed with that. So, I think as we finish the spending, we, we need to do, go back and do a review and accounting of all the spending that we've had on ARPA, just to do a lessons learned and an after-action review. Mr. Mayor?
Stan, do you have any comments? Are you still?
No, I'm just trying to figure it all out.
Fair enough. Me too. So, with that, you know, staff has been working on this for some time. We're, we're talking about adding bathrooms and showers at our Navigation Center. It's going to be a great addition to help people experiencing homelessness, right? So, this is good for our community in the long run. I think it's very clever on how we move money around to, to make this happen. So, I'll give that to staff, and I'd be happy to make a motion to go with staff recommendation.
I'd second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
If there's no other comments, we'll call for the vote. Call for the vote. Passes four zero. Okay, we'll move on to the consideration of the cancellation of January 7, 2025 city council meeting.
Thank you, your honor. The city council has canceled its first regular meeting in January for over the past 20 years in consideration of staff workloads and efforts to conform to the vacation and administrative leave policies for applicable management and support personnel. In reference to this history, this item is again being presented for council's consideration. If the January 7 meeting is not held, the next regularly scheduled meeting would be on January 21, 2025. However, should the necessity arise, a special meeting could be scheduled to expedite any item which might require immediate action. So with that, staff is presenting this item just to get direction from the council as to how you would like to proceed.
Okay. Bringing it back to the council, I'll start with A.J. Rivas' time, or Councilman Rivas. How do you feel? What's, do you have comments?
Well, let's keep the tradition and let's take a day off.
Councilman Green?
Yes, I have, I have no problem with that. If no one else does, I have none either.
Okay. Vice Mayor McCurvy?
Well, you know, it is just, it's our first full meeting. We should talk about how we can cancel the first meeting, right? I'm just trying to make a joke, but my timing is obviously off. Yeah, I concur. I think we stick with the tradition and celebrate the holidays and come back fresh.
I would second that in the fact that I was afraid you wanted to have the meeting. So that's probably why I wasn't laughing. So with that, I'll make a motion to consider the, or for the cancellation of the first city council meeting in January 2025.
I second.
Any other comments? Call for the vote. Passes four zero. Okay, on to AB 1234 reports. This is the time-
Your honor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we do have one more scheduled matter, and that is the item that was polled from consent calendar.
Thank you.
And that would be the Porterville Girls Fast Pitch Haysfield Agreement renewal. And staff is happy to provide a staff report, or we can answer questions?
Yes. You guys all read into this. Do you need a staff report? No? Okay, so I'll just kind of go ahead with why I polled it. You know, talked to Mike Rangel, and just great praising of the city and city staff, Parks and Leisure, is what they've been doing out at Haysfield. As far as the new lights, we spent $700,000 of ARPA funds for new lights out at Haysfield. In the past, they brought out red clay dirt. We've also have no charge for the snack bar. Praise for the police department's job in making sure the homeless population are not building encampments around the fields. Nothing but great news out of talking about Mr. Moore and the Parks and Leasures. And so I just want to point that out, and I was the one to reach out to Mike. And so some of the things that I'd like to do as far as a new direction in the way the city handles issues like this is I would, I'd like to look at the field usage and the lights per hour, what we're charging. I asked for some information on maybe the impacts if we changed from charging for $15 per day per field down to $1, and then also $10 per hour per field to $1 per hour. Is there any information on that?
We do have that information. Mr. Rednauer?
Thank you, Ms. Hildreth. Yes, so Donnie Moore is here this evening. And so he informed me, we did some research into this, and just based off of last year's numbers with this, we were looking at the revenues from the fields were about $5,272. And so if we looked and that was for that usage, and as if you, so if you were to eliminate or reduce the fee to a dollar, that would essentially be the impact to, to the revenues that go back into the general fund to support the activities of Parks and Leisure to, in that effort as we maintain the facility and those sorts.
Gotcha. And so that's something we'd look at. And we also talked about if we were to bring it down to a dollar, why even charge a dollar? Just let them be able to use that. You know, my belief, our youth is the future. I think especially after COVID-19, you know, everything has gone up. Registration fees have gone up, umpire fees have gone up. And you know, the COVID, the aftermath of COVID has really impacted all of our local organizations. And so part of this new direction I talk about is getting behind our local sports, our youth programs. And so I would like to look into cutting those rates, and maybe we go down to zero. What, so it's about a $5,000 impact to Parks and Leasures? Is that something that we can handle, Mr. Moore?
If we have to handle that, yes, we can handle it. Yes.
Okay. Awesome. So with that, I guess that would be my motion. Well, let me open it up to you guys. Is there any comments? I'll start with A.J. Rivas, or excuse me, Councilman Rivas.
In regards to Haysfield, I think we're doing an exceptional job if we can handle that, because I remember a lot of good baseball games that I played there when I was a kid. I mean, that was the ideal place to go. And I have a lot of fond memories there. I hit my, well, I hit a few home runs there. And you know, it brings back a lot of, I'm glad. I'm really honored that you guys are working on that. And I can't wait to attend one of those baseball games again. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Green? You really have to push it.
Well, anyway, no, I think it's very commendable.
That you, it worked now? There you go. Yeah, very commendable. I think you should support the kids. Good, 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 good form, Mayor Gregg. Good form. I think, I think that's great. If the city can absorb that, great for the kids, you know? Because I know Haysfield's been kind of like a cow pasture for a long time that I can remember finally getting it fixed up. It was a shame that it got the way it did, but no, that's great. I'm in agreement.
Well, in all fairness, it's a drainage.
Yeah, it is.
Mr. Rednauer, do you have comments?
I was just going to mention, one of the options, as well as the council, you know, every year, the council has a budget of $100,000 for special purposes fund.
Yes.
So we could also entertain, I say this endearingly, the Parks and Leisure Services Department's always very tight, and Donnie is a stand-up gentleman, and will always take the hit and make it work. But we may also, if the council may want to entertain, if you would like, to look at maybe allocating the potential revenues or the revenues that they received last year as a match to make that department whole. And so they can continue to maintain the facility as it is. Just an option. The council does not have to do that. But that's one of the options the council has.
I appreciate that. Vice Mayor McCurvy?
Well, you know, I just want to say a few things about Haysfield. I mean, I played there my whole life. And I got to watch my daughter play a championship game there, too, in the second generation. But I think it was Toppers Jewelers against ARPS Eastern Championships, Little League. Lots of family fun at that location over the years. Loved the snack bar and the family atmosphere. I love this idea because this is not the only location in town, but it is one of the older locations, and it has a lot of fond memories for me. But I think we should apply the same logic to the other areas around town, and we should find a way to fund it and not, and maybe not use that $100,000 that is suggested, but find a way in the city to manage our funds so that we can fund that for the kids because it's become so expensive. I remember there was a gentleman here, I think it was the same gentleman you mentioned, was talking about how hard it was to, you know, field the team, and just, they were making ends meet. And so if there's a way that we can support the kids in providing the resources and the facilities, which is the, which is the spirit of that Parks and Leisure Services, I think we should do that across the board. So I am all for this. Great conversation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I, and ultimately, I was looking at spending some of that discretionary funds of the council in a sponsorship. And what I was looking at is add a $2,500 sponsorship. What I'd like to see is a banner with our city logo and our city motto, "In God We Trust." Maybe centerfield, middlefield. But I think I would have to, we talked about the legals in this, it would have to be a scheduled matter for the next meeting. So, which I'll bring that motion in other matters. Currently, what we need to talk about is this contract renewal. Now, this, this was for, I forget how many years is it, how many years is this contract for?
Three.
Three.
It's a three-year contract?
Yes.
Oh, five-year.
It's five. It's more than that, yeah. And then I think it has, it has an extension.
Of three years. It could be extended.
Yeah.
Okay.
Potentially eight years.
So to clarify, it's five years with a three-year extension?
Actually, no.
If the council approves.
It's five years with an additional five-year extension.
Oh, so 10 years.
Five and five.
And that's not correct.
Yeah, it's wrong in the, it's wrong in the staff report. I'm looking at the agreement language itself. Term of this license shall be five years commencing January 1, ending December 31, 2029. So, and it will be extended for an additional five-year upon the same terms and conditions at the option of PGF.
Thank you.
So that'll be for the council in five years to discuss if they want to continue down this path or for that extension?
Right. Well, after the five years, you mean? They have the option, actually, if they're in compliance with their agreement and they've given notice, they, and we've determined they're in full compliance, they can, they are entitled to another five years of a license agreement.
Correct.
So we can change that if you want, but they actually have the ability in here, which is what we've done with them in the past.
What is the council's, Councilman Green? You got it.
It just came on.
We're going to be looking at upgrading this system here. Just be patient.
So we would review it in five years, or do we?
We would review to see if they're in compliance, because if they're not in compliance, then we, then you have the, it would be your option on whether or not you want it extended on what terms and conditions. Yeah.
So the reality is 10 years, because their history is this is a good organization, and they've always been in compliance. So more than likely, it would be a 10-year agreement.
So, yeah, I would think we would need, I'm not really certain exactly what to do in this matter, honestly.
Okay, well, just reserve your comments and we'll come back to you.
All right.
Councilman Rivas?
I'd like to keep it the way it is.
Is that, are you saying you want to keep it at the $15 per day, or towards what I was saying?
Towards what you were saying.
Okay.
So I have a suggestion on that, too. So we can certainly, we can, because the fees are not explicit in here, so, which is good. So you can actually just approve the agreement. We don't need to make any changes to address
Right.
the field, the field usage fees or the lighting fees.
Right.
And given the comments and the direction we've heard, what we're really looking at is potentially a change to our field use policy, our athletic field use policy, so that it's uniformly applied to our other, our others. So we, and so in, actually, you don't even probably need to, if you want, you can still vote on it as a council to set it. But we've got direction and we'll bring, we can bring it back as well if you guys just tell us what time frame you're looking at.
Gotcha. You're looking to table this and possibly-
Well, approve the agreement, because they want the agreement in place. They need the agreement in place. And I think you want everything else in here, because it does handle the responsibility over, you know, field repairs for their use and those kinds of things, which makes sense. And I think it's operated well in the past. This is just the similar agreement to what we've used in the past. Covers the kind of the things we need to just cover between the parties from a liability standpoint. So I think it's good to have it in place. We want to make sure that we have that in place so that if there are issues, we have had them from, not with this group, obviously, but with other groups. So we want to make sure we have that. But we can handle that independently of the field use policy and bring the field use policy pursuant to direction of the council.
Yeah, great discussion. I appreciate the explanation, too, because the clarity there, I would say we certainly want to do a citywide discussion on the field use policies across the board as another matter and a future meeting. But let's go, I'll make a motion that we just go ahead and accept this number 11 as is and go forward.
I'll second. Any other comments?
I look forward to changes.
Okay. Call for the vote?
Oh, didn't go? Sorry. Nothing? Okay.
Passes four zero. All right.
Yeah, we need to update the system. Okay, all right.
Okay, so with that, scheduled matters is done. Moving on to AB 1234 reports, or 1234 reports. This is the time for all AB 1234 reports required pursuant to government code 53232 dot three. Should I have to let you do that? So with that, we'll start with the LINK Committee, Local Initiatives Navigation Center Committee. I know Mr. Beltran is not here. Is there anybody else or staff that could report on that?
Yes, your honor. Ms. Calderon did attend that meeting.
Actually, I didn't attend the meeting, but one of my department members did and provided me with the summary. But I do have that. So the Local Initiatives Navigation Center Committee met on December 4, 2024. A call for volunteers to help canvas was made at the LINK Committee, as well as participation in the planning via the Zoom meeting hosted by KTHA. So the planning meetings for the new point-in-time survey will be held December 16, 13, January 13 and January 23. And point-in-time will be for the night of Sunday 26. And the Porterville team will canvass Wednesday, January 29. So LINK Committee normally goes dark December and January to transition to being the point-in-time committee. And so they won't meet again until February. But meanwhile, the point-in-time planning committee will help with the point-in-time census count. And their purpose is to survey individuals experiencing homelessness and collect data such as causes, services needed, and demographics that help agencies provide targeted services and apply for funding. And if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Any questions?
Yes, Ms. Calderon. In regards to funding, what type of funding are we trying, if we decide to go, that we possibly need?
So the LINK Committee is a subcommittee of the Kingsley Homeless Alliance.
Okay.
So it's not a city committee. We just have representation there.
Okay.
So the LINK fundraises, and they get some donations from the general community. And there is some funding that we provide to KTHA in the amount of $5,000 to help run the point-in-time, the LINK meetings, and with some of the items for the survey. So that's the only funding that we provide.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for clearing that up.
Okay, we'll move on to Larry County Economic Development Corporation. That was Madam Vice Mayor. Is there any staff that attended that meeting?
There is. Mr. Rednauer did attend that meeting.
Good evening, mayor. Thank you. So I represented the city of Porterville at the meeting on December 4. It was a fairly standard meeting. One of the things that they did was provide an update on the year-end. So they have had new projects, 17 new projects this fiscal year. They went, the rest of the items were standard business.
Thank you for that. Eastern Tulley Groundwater Sustainability Agency, was there staff?
Yes, happy to provide that report. The ETGSA met here in council chambers on December 5 at 2 o'clock, just ahead of schedule. The next meeting was postponed. It was scheduled for January 2. It has now been rescheduled to the 9. And so I'll be reaching out to committee members and get the agenda shared for that meeting as well. On December 5, we took public comment, general housekeeping items, minutes, and ratification of bills. Only a couple of action items. Was establishing some forms for reporting and some- Only a couple of action items, was establishing some forms for reporting, and some changes to the Basin Safe webpage for accounting for consumption and annual use of water. General reports were provided. Bulk of the meeting was in closed session. And again, just mentioning the time change for January 9 for the next board meeting here in council chambers at 2 o'clock.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Moving on to Tulare County Association of Government. I attended that meeting. Some of the things that did portray to the City of Porterville were some roundabouts that'll be coming off of Highway 190. One in particular is the roundabout at Westwood and 190. There was also a discussion about the roundabout, what they called the Rockford Roundabout. I don't know exactly the name of the street there, but it's the street 208, thank you, and Highway 190. There was also a gentleman from Four Creeks who works for Dinuba, if I'm correct. Mr. Ridenhour was in attendance, and he's going to help me through this. But there's discussion on the, what I brought up is the discussion for a overpass at a roundabout at Highway 190 in Plano. That is the future direction that is being brought forth with Caltrans, is they would like a roundabout there. And so our discussion was on having a pedestrian bridge built across there. The biggest problem is state laws want ADA...
Approval.
Yeah, well, standards, which is American Disabilities Act, which would make the footprint very large, and we really don't have the right of way to perform that. So it's something that we've looked at, we've talked about, we've been open in discussion, and we'll see what the future brings for the City of Porterville. Is there anything else that you'd like to add, Mr. Ridenhour?
No, you did a great job, Mayor. But yes, like you said, one of the things, the challenges that the engineer presented, and they presented several case studies, one also in Lost Hills, I think that many of us have seen, if you're driving on 46. These structures often cost millions of dollars, and the percentage of people who actually use the pedestrian bridge is very low. What they find is people will still cross that grade to not have to walk up either the stairs or the ramp to use the elevated crossing. I thought that was interesting.
Yeah. And nowadays, that jaywalking is no longer illegal. It's really the fastest route.
I have a comment. Can I comment on that, too?
Honorable Vice Mayor, of course.
You know, I was thinking about this, too, all of those things considered, is that how do we make it easier to travel underneath on Main Street to get back and forth, or make that the place that we can get people to travel if we can't do the bridge over for all of those reasons that we mentioned and been talking about? That's the only other viable way, and maybe there's a way we could improve that and improve the way we get to that to get back and forth beneath the freeway.
Are you talking about like an overpass?
Underpass. It's basically already there, but how do we make that more accessible and make it a place where people can cross?
And that'll be something that a future discussion will, and we'll have more details coming forward. Okay, with that, I'll close the 1, 2, 3, 4 reports, and we'll go into oral communication. This is the opportunity to address the council. Is there anybody that would like to come forward?
Taha, so my address on file. I commend you for your heart, Mayor, for the children. Just something to think about. I know you guys have a lot of great ideas here, but my invitation is to ensure that when we do give things away for free, that we're not, we're not sitting in a bad place financially. We have a lot of good money coming in, and everything's great, but to see the future beyond your terms. And what happens when we give free things away? Are we going to just limit it to children's teams, or are adults going to come in, and now we're going to have a situation where there's no free fields? Right? And we don't want to put our Parks and Leisure into a situation where they're having to not keep up with everything. So I understand where those are coming from. My invitation is to see the bigger picture and maybe use ways, creative ways, to deliver your impact specifically where you want to put it at, and that's with our youth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Mayor, Council, my name is Mike Wrangle. I am the president of Porterville Girls Fast Pitch. I want to thank you for all the consideration. I know you spoke on it earlier. I do want to say thank you to Donnie, as well as the rest of the city administration, for their continued support throughout the years. We are going into our eighth season, Porterville Girls Fast Pitch. Like I said, we were here just originally to hopefully get the renewal of the contract, but I did want to give some history on our league and what we've been able to do with the help of the City of Porterville. We appreciate your valuable contributions and continued support to our program. As we desire to continue fostering a positive environment for the youth of our community, Porterville Girls Fast Pitch is a nonprofit youth softball league that serves the City of Porterville and its surrounding communities. We strive to teach the young athletes the importance of sportsmanship, teamwork, trust, and commitment, along with the fundamentals of softball. We currently provide a recreational softball league in the spring and fall seasons, as well as a competitive travel ball league that runs through the summer months. Our league serves an estimated 250 to 302 athletes during the spring, 150 to 250 athletes during the fall, and approximately 60 to 80 athletes during the summer. Our athletes range from four years of age to 18 years of age. It's our league's hope to continue our partnership with the City of Porterville and the Parks and Leisure Department in delivering a youth softball league to the young athletes of our community. On behalf of Porterville Girls Fast Pitch, we thank you for your continued support, and we'd be happy to provide any additional information if required. I just wanted to say thank you. I do want to recognize Donnie, who's been awesome throughout the years, and we feel privileged to, you know, have the rights to Hayes Field, and we hope to continue that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? I see no one. Is there anyone online, Fernando?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, moving on to other matters. So with that, we'll start with Councilman Rivas.
In regards to what Mr. Taha said, I understand what you're saying, but we think we need to start the groundwork and making it a little bit more homemade, traditional for people to come out. And maybe in the future, we can possibly put some solar lights out there where it doesn't cost much to charge in regards to lighting and so on and so forth. But I appreciate your comments, and I will take it to hold. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilman Green?
I really don't have any comment at this moment on that. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor McCurvy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Listen, I am really excited. When I pulled up today, I saw that Merry Christmas banner out front that we bought. It's got the lights around it. It looks great. Downtown, still needs some work, but it looks really good. I'd really like to see us order some more decorations and get that all the way up and down the whole street. We had such a great Christmas parade recently. It was just great. It was family all the way down. And I have one observation on that, too. The Christmas parade is so nice. You go all the way down past Olive now, but we don't have streetlights down past Olive, so it gets kind of dark. So certainly an opportunity, something that we need to look at. But it looks like the downtown is starting to revive in some ways, and so we want to finish what has already been done and improve, I think, with, the banner's a great start. Maybe another banner would be great. I love the logo idea and heritage idea that we've been talking about, but Merry Christmas is the heritage of everybody in America, so that really feeds that narrative. But I really love to see us finish buying some more of those decorations and make it even nicer next year, and to really look at the lights down there past Olive for the nighttime parade, because, of course, safety is a high priority for me. And I think that there was a lot of folks down there that they were fine, but they were in the dark, and it would be better if it was lighter down there.
It was very dark down there.
Also, as we finish the year, you know, we want to spend some time with our families and celebrating the season, of course. It's really important as we finish the year. We go through the season of Thanksgiving, and we're thankful. It's a very uniquely American holiday, because that's humility, right? We're thankful for the things that we have. And you hope that carries all year, but you go into the next season to celebrate the birth of Christ, and that's renewal, right? This is what centers us around why we're thankful, why we're here. And then you go into New Years, and that's also rebirth. And what we often see as we go into a new year is we have an opportunity, each and every one of us, to take stock, to make resolutions, to set goals. And we have a new council. We're going to go away for a few weeks here, but when we come back, we're going to come back with a fresh set of eyes, if you will. We're going to be in that spirit of renewal, rebirth, and planning. And I really am excited about next year, and so we want to finish this meeting with a heartfelt thanks for those that are retiring also. We're not going to have an opportunity to say thank you to those that have put in their life's work, like Patrice, and of course, the Assistant Fire Chief back there, and others, I'm sure. Those are the two that I know about. But, you know, we want to have that spirit as we finish tonight and make sure that we give them the opportunity and the recognition of the time that they spent, and this is maybe their last meeting, too. One final thought, and I don't know, being new to all this and the other matters, I think that, you know, I could propose something that we could put on a future agenda, and I'll make this statement. Safety and traffic are a real high priority for me, and over in the area around Lombardi School, the Brookside subdivision, I think we need to review the safety and the traffic around that area again. And even if that's a closed-door session in a future meeting, I'd like to propose that we put that as a high priority going into the next meeting. That's it.
I, that doesn't need a motion in a second. He could request for that. Yeah. I think I know where he's wanting to go with that, right? Would you like a motion in a second?
Let's go ahead and do a motion in a second. We would be probably bringing it back anyways, but that way we'll all remember, right?
Okay, so Ed's comments was the motion. I am seconding that motion. Call for the vote. And just for clarification, that's going to be in closed session?
Probably.
It's probably best.
Probably.
Okay, and it passes 4-0. Okay, so with that, I just wanted to address some of the comments of giving out the city's money. We actually sponsor events in our community, and you could say the local powwow, we give $5,000 a year for our local tribe. And we've done so for many, how many years do you think we've been doing that?
You caught me off guard. I don't know. Several?
Several, is fair to say. So my point being is, why not sponsor our community, our youth, right? And I agree, and you're a, your opinion is valued. You're an entrepreneur and a great man in our community. And so anytime you get up and speak, and I want to say thank you for being here through this meeting, because not, as you can see, hardly anybody comes and actually does this, so thank you for that. So I wanted to share some stuff. Huntington Beach, you know, they are the role model in California as a charter city, and they've been leading the way. And to my colleagues, I'd say they're two years ahead of us. They had a big win and swept the council there in Huntington Beach, and they just won a lawsuit that I wanted to bring to the people and to staff. Huntington Beach, the voter ID, they beat the state of California in the lawsuit. So as a charter city, they now have voter ID in their city, which is a big deal. And so I want to congratulate the City of Huntington Beach and what they're doing. Moving on from that, the Christmas banner. Donnie Moore, great job. Looks amazing. Love seeing it lit up. It came out great. I asked you to make it cute, and you did it. So thank you, sir. With that, I love seeing our police department get involved with the community. The Santa Claus at the police department, I don't know how well it was attended, but I saw it online, loved it. I know you guys have been doing this for years and trying to reach out to our community. Please continue down that path. I thank you for that. The retirement of our canine dog, is it Kaiser? Kaiser, seven years of service, right? So congrats to him, and, you know, I know he can't understand me, but I am thankful for his service.
And he will be, his handler was not able to attend this evening. We were going to have him here, but he will be on as a presentation at the next council meeting.
Awesome. Awesome. So Fernando, bring dog treats, okay. So, and then with that, I'm going to make a motion, and I kind of already talked about it, but I would like to use our discretionary funds we have. As a council, we have $100,000 a year as discretionary funds. And what I'd like to do is be a sponsor for the Porterville Girls Fast Pitch, and what I would like to see is a banner with the city's logo and our city motto, "In God We Trust." That is my motion.
That'll be in a future agenda item, since we don't have it on for tonight, right?
Yes, as a scheduled matter. So, and hopefully, Councilman Beltran will be there to put his input on this as well. So it'd be good. That is my motion, and I leave it to you guys.
I'll second that motion, sir. And I look forward to the next council meeting, and everybody have a good holiday. Until then, Happy New Year and Merry Christmas.
Okay. Is there any other comments? Call for the vote? Passes 4-0. So with that, we did not finish our closed session, so I'll hand it over to you, Julia.
Yep, thank you. We need to reconvene. I'm not, I don't, we may have a report after, possibly, after closed session.
Okay.
Just a note for the record.
Okay, so we'll go back into closed session?